And we'll now turn it over to Brandon for staff announcements.
Thank you, Chair Werner. I wanted to note that the City State of the City address was provided by the mayor last week, and I wanted to highlight some of the components that related specifically to community development, but would recommend anybody that hasn't seen the address that it is recorded on the city and available on the city website to see it in full. In terms of community development, the department issued 1,124 permits over the course of 2024, including processing 74 land use applications and conducting plan reviews on 510 separate projects and conducted over 3,860 inspections. The Planning Division specifically held 42 pre-application conferences. We sent out public notices to 108 neighborhoods over the course of the year and reviewed 395 building permit applications. Additionally, although it doesn't come before this committee or commission, code compliance was again active in 2024, and during that year, we had 242 complaints that were addressed or violations of code. Some of those were resolved by not by determining they weren't violations of code. All told, of the 242, 211 were considered resolved as either being referred to an appropriate regulating agency, being closed by coming into compliance, or being found to not be in compliance. So that's a quick overview of some of the Community Development Department. The housing component of it, you know, just notably, the housing program regulates our existing housing, affordable housing stock for every change of tenancy, but further supports both housing and human services projects through support from the city through award of grants. In 2024, we granted $350,000 in Affordable Housing Trust funds to organizations building capacity or building housing within our community, and also granted $141,000 in community development block grants, and have granted $134,000 in social service funds. I'll note that the social service funds are biennial, so it's really 67,000 a year over a two-year period, but done in the 2024 calendar year. So that's an update on the 2024 State of the City. If you didn't have an opportunity to go to it, I did see some familiar faces there. I also wanted to note that at the next city council meeting on February 4th, the Grandview Terrace application for apartments at 1511 Highway 99 will be submitting a request to the city council to waive community development or planning application fees that are related to that project, preparing to submit an application for a 210-unit development. This project, most of you are familiar with, it applied in 2017 and 2019 for a 230-unit development, so the project has changed to a degree. At that point in time, the applicant's proposal was approved by the Planning Commission and the city council and appealed to Luba, and when the city council was reviewing the Luba remand, the applicant withdrew the application with the expectation of submitting again once state law changes under the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities program were in effect, which they are now. So we're expecting that application soon. So that's my updates.
Thank you very much. And, public forum. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Other business. We have the introduction of a new commission and committee handbook, which you have in your packet, and we have a nice new shiny copy here at our stations. Cool. So I'd now like to introduce and welcome City Manager Sabrina Cotta, who is here to give us a briefing on the new handbook. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So Sabrina Cotta, the city manager. And one of the things that I and the staff liaisons of the city have been developing is some more guidance for our committees and commissions, as well as our staff liaisons. So in your packet, you have the draft of our commissions and committee handbook. This covers many items, including everything from how to make a motion to what your role is as a commission, and the role of the chair, the role of the staff liaisons. So for many of you, and thank you, you have been committee and commission members for a long time, and you may be familiar with most of this, but often when we have new members come on, kind of thrown to the wolves, and you may not know the format, and once you're sitting up here and everyone's looking at you, it's a little intimidating to make a motion, for example. So my hope with this is it provides some clear direction for those participating in our commissioning committees, as well as clear direction to our staff liaisons. As a staff liaison to city council, I think we're always trying to navigate how to make our meetings run smoothly and ensure that people who are making the decisions have the tools they need. So hopefully, this is just another tool in your toolbox to help that happen. The other items in the packet you have are the city's social media policy, our workplace expectations around behavior, and the use of city technology. So these are policies that we expect everyone who is representing the city or working for the city to adhere to when they are kind of part of our group here at the city. So we have those there for you to review. And Brandon, it has some sign-off sheets and recognition that you have been given those policies to review and agree to adhere to the city's standards for conduct. I think that is all I really had. I don't want to, you know, read through the handbook. I know that the Planning Commission, you all have many things dictated to you by state statute and ORS, so your greatest resource is probably the gentleman sitting next to me. You have great staff liaisons in the Community Development Department. So if you have any questions, they can definitely help you, but you can always reach out to me as well, and we can get you the answers that you need. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So you mentioned this is a draft?
This is the final. That being said, I would consider it a working document. So we're always open to feedback, to amending our handbook as we work through it.
Okay, because I, going through it, I, there are a couple, yeah, some typos and some missed words and that kind of stuff. And in general, my question is, so the commission is different than the advisory committees, and I didn't see that reflected in here. And then I also saw a lot of boards and commissions, the phrase "boards and commissions" mentioned, which I'm not sure we have any boards, and I would think that you might want to clarify what that is.
Perfect. I think, yeah, we can definitely go through that and take a look. There's also a document, a table in here, that outlines kind of guiding documents for each commission or committee. So this is a general document that kind of applies a baseline of overall conduct and, you know, how you do a meeting, but your guiding documents are going to be those that are outlined, whether you have state statute, a comprehensive plan, resolution, et cetera, that are really giving you the guidance. So for the Planning Commission, AMC, Comprehensive Plan, and Land Use Code, those are really going to kind of dictate your authority.
Okay, so you're talking about the things that are listed in, on page 22 or 23?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have?
Two questions. One thing. So is an intention here more uniformity because I am on a commission and a committee, and I find that they operate quite differently?
They do. So I think, you know, when we're talking about the Planning Commission, the Budget Committee, Parks and Recreation Commission, right, those are very different than the advisory bodies. But in terms of adhering to public meeting law, codes of conduct, how you make a motion, those are all very similar. So there is an effort to bring uniformity to all of our bodies who are providing advice to council or who are acting under the authority of state statutes such as yourselves. So you'll see me again
At the pack.
Public car, yeah.
And then my second question, specifically to the guidance, I can't find the page now. To Zoom participations per year?
So that is in the ordinance for commissions and committees. So that is the council direction. And so for 2.10 municipal code, that has been updated to outline things such as terms, Zoom participation, et cetera. So there is a carve-out for the Planning Commission. So if you have state statute that would dictate otherwise, the state law holds. Otherwise, it reverts back to our AMC, which is the 2.1, which has been updated.
So I think the reason, maybe the reason she's asking that is that one of our commissioners is out of town a lot, and so he has been zooming in. So when I read the number two Zoom meetings a year, I was thinking that that would automatically disqualify him from continuing on the commission, and I really don't want that because he's a good member. So is?
So I would assume he can finish out his term and moving forward. That is the requirement for all commissioning committee members.
Okay.
Is that state mandated, or is that Ashland mandated?
Ashland mandated. Council made that decision.
What is, the council decided that? Do you know what the impetus behind it is?
I think that's probably a question for city council.
Okay. Okay, and you, you mentioned that, so if state law allows the commission to have Zoom meetings, but doesn't quantify the number?
So if state law were to say that all Planning Commission members can attend Planning Commission meetings by Zoom, and that's the state law, then I think that would be something of consideration.
Okay.
But AMC, you know, and Brandon, I don't know if there is a Zoom qualification for?
No, the state law does stipulate that Planning Commission meetings and public hearings have to be electronically available to the public, so we do have to have all meetings available by Zoom, but the intent is that people providing public testimony can do so remotely. I think the city council establishing rules of conduct or rules of, you know, being present is something that the city council can enforce on a local level. I do want to appreciate those members that are zooming in because they have ailments and don't want to contaminate the rest of us, so thank you for doing so. So I do think that even in the council's discussion of it, there was consideration for the reason for zooming in as opposed to a regular occurrence, but for, you know, due to somebody being sick is clearly value for them to zoom in as opposed to just not attend.
Okay. Russell?
In this respect with zooming in, is a study session considered differently than a regular meeting?
That I would have to read AMC. I'm not sure I can answer that off the top of my head. So we can send out a copy of that chapter of code for you all to review, as it applies to all.
And when does that start?
I believe February. So you'll also see there is a change in term limits. So there will be a message from the recorder going out to all of our members who might be affected by that change in term limits, looking to extend current terms to the end of the year, as well as bringing the other terms of midterm members in line with the change.
Okay. That would be, yeah, that would be good. Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, another quick question here, Sabrina, and thanks for your work on this. It looks like a lot of information that you've compiled here. On page 16, under the basic principles, it says all members must receive a notice for a meeting no less than 72 hours prior to the meeting. And then it goes on to say that if we're going to be absent from the meeting, we have to let you know five days in advance of the meeting. So technically, and I just want to make sure I get this straight, it could be that a meeting is scheduled, and then we don't have enough time to let anyone know that we may not be able to attend.
So I think that's if you know you're going to be on vacation or some sort of planned absence. Of course, things come up, emergencies, illness, et cetera, right? So it's just a courtesy. So if you have a family vacation, you know you can attend. You can let your staff liaison know. That way, they can make sure that there's a quorum, right? And remember, this is for all of our committees and commissions. So Planning Commission is fairly formal in comparison to some of our other advisory committees.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I would note that it's exceedingly rare that the Planning Commission schedules a special meeting with just 72 hours' notice, but it could occur. If there was an application that was before you and we were facing 120-day clock in order for approval, there might be a necessity to schedule a special meeting, in which case, we'd have to publish notice 72 hours in the newspaper and obviously provide that notice to the commission. And if, hearing that, you were not going to be present, even though it wouldn't meet the five-day requirement, I think it's recognized that giving that 72 hours' notice back to us would allow us to affirm that a quorum was present. I did want to note another comment in terms of consistency with other committees, as Commissioner McCracken Jane indicated, that one area of change that you may see is to how minutes are created. The city recorder, having looked at requirements for minutes, we are going to be providing summary minutes. I know that our minutes at the Planning Commission many times are many pages long. They largely be action-oriented focused, with minutes describing who spoke to what issue in terms of members from the public, and then the decisions and motions of the commission, and probably not as elaborative in terms of the discourse going back and forth. But the full meeting Zoom video, or more specifically, the audio recording is kept as a public record. So if somebody wanted to see precisely what was said, that is available for the public, as well as commissioners in reviewing prior meetings.
And if the commissioner needed to catch up in order to be able, in order to be able to vote on an issue at the next meeting, they would still need to see the video, not just look at the minutes?
Yeah, correct. We would typically request that a commissioner review the video so that they could see what transpired, and then attend the, and read the packet, and attend the next meeting, and state at that next meeting that they can comment on the action or vote on it because they're up to date, having attended subsequent to the meeting date by watching the entirety of the video.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not looking at you.
So what's next with this?
This is it. You don't have to see me again. So this is just rolling out as a resource for committees and commissions. We're currently looking for some chair training to offer to all of the chairs of our committees and commissions for some formal training on running meetings. And of course, the experience varies among all of our committees and commissions in that as well. And then also some additional training for our committee and commission members as an opportunity to learn more about public meeting law and those kind of things that matter to our committees and commissions, to be able to conduct the business of the city.
Chairs and vice chairs, I would assume? The same training, or?
Mm-hmm. I do have one more question. It's regarding a quorum. So what if you have a quorum? There's a whole section on quorums and whether, when, when they work and when they don't work. So my understanding is if you have a quorum, when that's important is when you start the meeting. And then as the meeting progresses, if, say, we only had four members, that would be a quorum. But one of the members then recuses him or herself because of some conflict of interest or whatever the issue is, and there's three members left to vote, is that still okay to vote?
No, you need a quorum to vote.
So usually, if you've got a conflict of interest, do you recuse yourself from the meeting and ahead of time, so you know it's not a quorum? So if somebody else has to show up, at least, that's?
When, the one time that I recused myself, I was here for the meeting and then went out of the room during the portion of the meeting that I was recusing myself for. So I would have been here to show, to be as part of the quorum at the beginning.
I got it, but you?
There is a seldom-used Robert's Rules of Order, that I'm not a parliamentarian, but in the event that there are, in the scenario that you outlined, three people here, one person is recused and therefore not able to vote, there is a provision that they can remain and that they're, they're not allowed to speak to the item, and that their vote is considered a no for the purposes of the motion made in order to satisfy the quorum requirement. Again, that's not an ideal situation, but it has occurred in the past. So it's something that we had previous legal advice on how to address the quorum issue in that scenario. But typically, if you do not have four members, you shouldn't, the meeting should stop, and no further actions be taken.
Okay, that's interesting. That's, go ahead.
So I would think as a Planning Commission, it's our responsibility as individual commissioners that if we know we are going to have to recuse ourselves, we need to let the other commissioners know so that the quorum can be attained that doesn't include us. I mean, it's kind of the way I always think about it. It's like, you know, make sure that there's enough people there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and on page 14, there's a paragraph that kind of speaks to that. The purpose is to protect from unrepresented action taken by a small number of individuals. So that is why there is a quorum requirement. So I?
Are you, are you talking about the first paragraph on 14?
Yeah, a vote for a decision may not be taken in the absence of a quorum.
Okay. I didn't see in there, you just mentioned, you mentioned that if the person comes back and is part of the voting, their vote is a no?
That was something that I mentioned in terms of the provision for which when somebody has to recuse himself, but is necessary to be counted as part of a quorum. In another scenario where their recusal still leaves a quorum of voting members, then they should not participate in any way and not have any vote.
Right, no, I get that.
But in the case that they are absolutely necessary for a quorum, despite the recusal, then they cannot engage, and they, their vote is considered a no. So you would need, you know, essentially, all three members to vote in favor of it. Otherwise, you would have a tie.
Okay, so I don't see here?
And it's not enumerated here.
That's kind of advanced level of Robert's Rules, so that's not going to be in here? Does that, is that something that happens here often?
No, but I'm just playing what-if in my brain.
Yeah, this is, you know, there's a guide that was prepared, both for committee members and honestly, for staff. We have a lot of staff liaisons for various committees, that having a general guideline is helpful for them as well. But when we have detailed questions that involve legal counsel, we'll call on legal counsel for a ruling. So if we knew there were only going to be four members present at a meeting and one had a conflict, knowing that in advance of the meeting, we would get a determination from the legal department.
Okay. Okay. Can I ask you one more nitpicky question? On the 18, it talks about division of the assembly, and I've never heard the term "division" before, so I'm not familiar with that. But at the, at the bottom of the paragraph that goes along with division of the assembly, it says, "The chair must immediately take the vote again and ask the member to either, ask member to either raise their hands or to rise." I would think a roll call would be the way to do that, but?
So this would be more typical for when you're like, all in favor, I, kind of situation? If it's unclear, if it's a clear I or no, that's when you could call for a division, and like, all eyes rise, so you can get a clear count of whose agreement.
Raise your hand.
Yes. So typically, like in council, it's a roll call, so each individual vote is being counted, and I would assume that's what happens in Planning Commission as well. So this would not apply with the roll call.
Okay, so typically, we do a roll call here.
Yeah, and I would, I would stick with that.
Okay. Okay. Greg or Eric, do you have any comments or concerns, or?
I have no questions. Yep, none here.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, or? Okay.
Thank you very much, and thank you guys for your service on the Planning Commission. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to our second other business, and that is the Accessory Dwelling Unit Guide, which, this is the new shiny example of that, sorry. And Brandon's going to make a presentation, and we have Derek Sherrill, Cheryl, Sherrill, that, that ADU guide in the audience to make a presentation. Go for it.
Thank you, Chair Werner. So to give you a general program overview, but before I do, what's being handed out now is the follow-up to the discussion that we just had in the packet materials regarding the policies of the city. As public officials, all city employees, council members, and all appointed officials are bound by the workplace policies, and as such, we'll be looking to collect these at some point. So, back to accessory dwelling units. So accessory dwelling units, as you all know, are secondary self-contained housing units on the same property as a primary residence. And really, they're designed to provide independent living with a kitchen, bathroom, and a separate entrance. They're also permitted outright in all residential zones within Ashland. And what this program endeavors to do is create pre-approved plans in order to reduce barriers for homeowners and streamline the process. Although the city code changed to no longer require a planning action for the development of accessory dwelling units on any residential property, for many homeowners that are considering it, just the process of getting a building permit, how do they get an accessory dwelling unit designed, what are the steps involved in securing financing, are all obstacles for moving forward with what is, from our perspective, of a relatively straightforward application process. And so the intention of the guide that was handed out was to really reduce those barriers and provide a, some contact for individuals to reach back out if they are considering putting a second unit on their property. I do want to recognize that as part of this program of providing free plans, we want to recognize contributors to the program, specifically architects and designers and municipalities, that have provided these pre-approved plans to the city for distribution. The city of Medford, the city of Eugene, Carlos Delgado, and Derek Sherrill, who's with us in the audience, all were kind enough to provide us projects that have met building code and are completing the review process in the city of Ashland, and I believe that they all are going to be stamped as approved as of tomorrow. So it's very timely that we're before you because this is now available for our community. I also wanted to note that the state of Oregon recognizes that accessory dwelling units are a vital resource statewide to address the housing need. And so the Building Codes Division, is my understanding, is working on developing some pre-approved plans as well that would be available, and we would also incorporate those into our program in Ashland and make them available for our residents. That ADU design at the state level is not completed. My understanding is they will be doing so over the course of 2025. So in short order, we should have even more to the list to choose from. To note some benefits of accessory units, probably more for the audience at home, I know you guys are eminently familiar with them, they really do increase housing supply throughout the city. They have the potential to generate rental income for homeowners. They promote- They promote really efficient use of space because in many times, it's the conversion of unused interior space on a house into an ADU. So it provides for another household or a portion of someone's backyard. They often provide for housing for caretakers or for multi-generational families to still live on the same area but have some measure of independence. And that is increasingly seen as a reason for getting accessory dwelling units in Ashland is to allow aging populations to live in place while they no longer need a three-bedroom home. They may be able to move into a small accessory unit and rent out their primary home and really have the inverse of rental income from the primary dwelling. So in developing this guide, we did want to point people to really some steps in how to assess their property, look at zoning, setback requirements, landscaping that's in place, what infrastructure is already existing, as really a preliminary step to determine what they might need to do to put a unit on a property. And that helps people really define what their goals are. If the goal is to create rental income, is it to create family housing? Obviously, that's going to change the metric as to what you're looking to put on your property. If it's for a family member, they may want to have a lot of input in what that unit looks like. And some of the pre-designed guides, plans that we have available may not suit their choice. And so they can either choose a design or develop one customized. I would note that of the plans that are going to be offered by the city, they're pre-approved as is. So if somebody needed to do alterations to those, they would have to go back to the designer and either have them do the alterations. For instance, if something showed a shower and somebody wanted to expand that space and put in a larger bathroom and maybe add an extra 100 square feet to the building, those changes will trigger a new plan, be submitted and reviewed and approved by the city. So again, that all gets to an applicant determining what it is they want and really defining a budget for it, working with a financial institution to cover those costs, and then coordinate the construction of it. And so we've tried to put some of those steps in the guide, really for the layman to review. I think for experienced builders or contractors or developers, that is all known, those streams. But again, this guide is more targeted to the single-family homeowner that has never built a home and wants to get started and sees it as a viable option. We wanted to note that construction costs for accessory residential units can vary pretty substantially. You know, if you're converting an existing habitable space in your house and adding a kitchen, you know, a kitchen's an expensive addition, but it's going to come in at a per-square-foot cost on the low end of $100 a square foot, 150 a square foot. If you are building a standalone structure in the backyard with a deck and all the details that you could desire, you could be pushing $500 a square foot. You know, unfortunately, it is a market truth that the smaller the unit, it does reduce costs. But some of the major cost elements in construction are the kitchen and bathrooms, and they're not amortized over a greater square footage. Means that you have a higher per-square-footage cost. So there are minor incentives that are available. I'd say they're not incentives to the degree that make the development of the housing unit, you know, substantially subsidized. But the city can reduce the systems development charges for small units. If they're less than 500 square feet, they only pay half the systems development charges that would otherwise be required. There are also a number of state, local, and federal programs to incentivize energy conservation measures that we wanted to point people to our Conservation Department to be aware of those. If you're building a unit from the ground up, you might as well incorporate a number of those measures and utilize those incentives. Additionally, you know, we wanted to provide recommendations within the guide to note that, you know, fire-wise landscaping will be required or at least general fuels management on a property. And this is an existing standard within Ashland's wildfire hazard area that any new construction of habitable space or even a deck of over 200 square feet requires the perimeter of that be cleared to flammable materials. So again, it's these kind of upfront information that people have before they select a design so that they're not surprised at the point they come in to get a building permit and are told that they would be in a position to remove highly flammable vegetation within 30 feet of that building or within five feet of the building not having any combustible materials. Those kind of requirements, again, should be known at the front end. So we wanted to have a guide that addressed them. And lastly, I wanted to note that the guide is really a first step. We also have, next week, we're going to launch a webpage that clarifies the availability of these free plans, offers really a snapshot of what those plans are so people can start thinking. But before the city releases a full set of construction-ready plans to an individual, we would require a 30-minute consultation with the Planning Department so that they come in. At that point, when they schedule the meeting, we prepare a map of their property so that they can start looking at that site planning component. We'd also indicate if they're within a historic district, that free consultations with the Historic Preservation and Advisory Committee Board, a subset board that meets on Thursdays, every Thursday, is available to provide consultation and some free advice on how to make an accessory dwelling unit compatible with the historic district. Although it's not subject to a planning action as they used to be, where that would be required as a condition, they're outright permitted at this point. But there's still a value both to the neighborhood and the homeowner to build a compatible, historically-compatible home, if for nothing else, to maintain the value of their property in the district that they're in. So those are outlined and contacts are provided in the guide so that somebody walking away with it and having some time to think will know who to reach back out to. So with that, if you have any questions of the guide and our rollout of it, happy to take those. I should have noted in the recognition, thanks to Commissioner Greg Perkinsen for helping initially with this guide. Was one of the early reviewers. And also Derek Sherrill reviewed it and gave some recommendations for including information on construction and financing as well.
Anybody have any questions? No? Sure, go ahead.
Just a comment. Oh, I'm sorry, just a comment, not a question. Yeah, I really like how this evolved, Brandon. I think you and your team did a great job with this. So thanks.
Thanks. Thank you.
So, yeah, I think it's a really commendable thing that has been done here and a real resource for the community. And in, you know, not only reducing some of the obstacles to getting going and ensuring these projects are going in the direction that we want them to, but making sure that the solar requirements are, you know, that we have solar-friendly designs out of the box, which I think is really great. Having gone through a permitting process recently on a tight lot, that the Climate Friendly and Equitable Housing Act influencers are reflected in the designs without it being preachy about that. One thought was to perhaps, since this is intended to be helpful and friendly to people, to suggest that they check with their insurance agent. As different insurers have different policies and practices with regard to how ADUs are treated.
That's a good ad and reminds me of something that's a little off-topic but somewhat related. I would note that accessory dwelling units in Ashland in single-family zones, and I'll come back to why this relates, cannot be used as travelers' accommodation units, that those are outright permitted in our single-family zones. The reason I was reminded of it has to do with insurance, that many people that rent out their house through VRBO or an accessory residential unit as a travelers' unit do not check with their insurance company as to the change of use from a residential use to a commercial use. And as such, they may not have the coverage that they anticipate should one of those travelers be hurt. Theoretically, that would not be a problem in Ashland if people didn't utilize accessory dwelling units as travelers' accommodations. But it has happened. So I think it's a very good point and something that we could add to the guide. You know, as Sabrina Cotta noted with the working document, this is also a working document. We do have some information in here that's fee-specific to 2025. We're anticipating changing this document as codes change as well as fees change. And I think that we can incorporate a comment on checking with insurance providers on how that would impact their insurance and also checking with their property taxes, how the inclusion of an accessory unit might change property taxes on a property. Two financial things I hadn't incorporated. So thank you.
Sorry, related question. The no-short-term rentals. How is that monitored and enforced? And who does that?
I did mention the 242 complaints that we received last year for code compliance. We do have a number of legitimate bread-and-breakfast owners that will contact the city upon seeing any listing for a travelers' accommodation unit that is not a registered travelers' accommodation. We do require that any Airbnb listing include the conditional use permit number for which it was approved. And so our code compliance officer reviews those to ensure compliance. In 2024, there were, I believe, 12 traveler accommodation code violation concerns, of which six were in single-family neighborhoods. Six were in multifamily neighborhoods and could go through a process to become approved. And I believe in 2023, there were nine traveler accommodation violations in single-family neighborhoods that were processed through code compliance, of which six were in single-family neighborhoods. So there is a persistent, active process to identify those and really ensure that travelers' accommodations are not located in single-family neighborhoods within the city.
Good question. Russell?
Yeah, thanks, Brandon. I just want to recognize that this is a huge milestone for Ashland and its goals towards affordable housing and really appreciate your work on this. A quick question, you know, these are pre-approved plans. Things change and people might want to modify these pre-approved plans. And I know that you talked a little bit about that. But I think that, you know, there could be a scenario where people want to redo the layout or they want to, you know, maybe move a wall. Are these plans pre-engineered as is? And if they are just changing layout, does reengineering have to take place?
There, many of the plans do have engineering in place for, you know, roof trusses, foundation detail. So if they were changing things that impacted that, that would require an engineer to restamp a set of plans. If simple modifications are made, they would still trigger a new building department review. And I say that because even, for example, putting a water heater in a different location in order to expand a space may mean that water heater doesn't meet the venting requirements. So, you know, any alteration of these plans will be considered a customization and they're no longer pre-approved plans at that point. I would note that they can also just be a starting point for discussions with a designer or an architect to say, I'd like a plan like this but has the following add-ons, at which point it is, again, a custom-designed plan. But you have a head start and you know what could fit on the property. So, you know, I'm seeing this more as an education process. City of Medford has been somewhat successful at getting the very same ADU plans that they allowed the city to utilize, built within their community. So it's our hope that people will see a, something off the shelf and take that and run with it. Russell?
Great, thanks, Brandon.
Well, I also think this is a great idea. So more power to you. Our presentation?
Come on up. So I'll introduce Derek Sherrill, as known as the ADU Guide, who has a YouTube following as well. He not only works as a designer designing accessory dwelling units, but builds them and provides very detailed how-to guides online for anybody who wants to follow along. He'll probably touch on that. But we're fortunate that he lives within the City of Ashland and has done a number of accessory dwelling units here. Although from my experience, Derek's reach is a little more statewide, if not national, in that regard. So we're very fortunate to have him with us tonight.
Thank you, Brandon. I just want to say really quickly, thanks to staff.
Could you push the red button there so we pick you up on the...
Oh, no, no, sorry. I just want to say thank you to staff and the team and also Jen, who is no longer with the city, but put a lot of work into this. These processes are hard. Wheels in housing turn super slow. I started with these plans back in Talent 36 months ago. And to see them come to fruition here is awesome. We've given them to several cities. We've given these couple of plans that we gave to the city here to people all over the nation that have built these two units that we gave away. I focus on affordability, attainability. And I say affordable or more affordable with a little bit of qualification. I grew up in Ashland, single mom, on welfare, Section 8 housing in this town. Lived in an apartment, different apartments all over this town my whole life. And I'm at a high school woodshop teacher. And we built an illegal ADU in 1995 for another one of our high school teachers. So I've officially been building accessory dwelling units for almost 30 years. And it's my life's work. We give everything that we do away. We open-source housing on our YouTube channel. I travel around the country and talk about infill housing strategies. And another thing that makes the plans that we gave the city a little bit more unique is we have a YouTube series, 14 parts, on exactly how to build those two ADUs with cost breakdowns. So something that we really feel strongly about. We open-source what we're doing on our website, thataduguy.com. And again, we've got links to our YouTube channel and other resources that people can use. Also in the county, we're really excited to have Jackson County adopting some ADU language in rural residential lots, 2 acres or larger, up to 900 square feet. So that's a really cool addition. So accessory dwelling units really are the most affordable housing option we have today. And that's because of basically the free land and the ability to tap into existing utilities. So the example I use often is like if we've got a sewer line lateral that feeds a primary house, we can put a Y into that line for maybe $500. If we're going to do a duplex or a middle housing unit or a new fee simple lot, we have to tie in to the main out in the street. And that, on average, is about $15,000. And that's one of five utilities that we need. So just the infrastructure reduction cost alone is a gigantic savings. And $500 a square foot, that example, might sound really expensive. And it is, and it can be. But if you figure that's a $250,000, 500-square-foot unit, 2/3 of all US households are two people or less. Okay, so we can build smaller houses. And a $250,000 house that's accessible and approachable, maybe age and place, design-specific, is a really, really good deal when the average price in Ashland today is $537,000. And that's not a brand-new, earth-advantaged platinum house either, right? So a bunch of benefits of ADUs. I'm preaching to the choir here. You guys know what free plans are. There's a couple of things I'd like to mention that I think we could do better as a city as a city and as a community on the ADU front for affordability. Okay, more affordable, right? So affordable housing, no more than one-third of your income goes towards housing expenses, including utilities. So we can't even get affordable housing here with the price of land, really with just like taxes and insurance. We can't, like, the median price point, renting a house for $600 isn't going to even cover tax burden and insurance, hazard insurance for the home, right? But more affordable, what things can we do to bring down prices? And the big one is reduction or elimination of system development fees. So the guidebook here shows it at about seven and a half to eight percent of total costs. We're seeing it more like maybe double that percentage of the cost. And we've seen great success in areas in our state like Portland, Oregon, who have eliminated system development fees. They went from 60 to 80 applications a year to several hundred a year. City of Medford has spent the last three years with a program that waives system development fees if you sign a 10-year silent second, saying that you will not use it as a short-term rental. And they've had a huge influx of applications for accessory dwelling units too. So the ability to take some of the $2 billion, 2 billion B, what, billion in the biennium for Housing and Human Services and like carve off a color of that money to give to smaller cities that can then apply those to system development charges, in my opinion, for owner occupants. Okay, developers like me, we don't need the subsidy. But owner occupants that will like these free plans do need them. And one thing I'd like to say about the free ADU plan is it's for the people that are on the margin, if they can afford it or not. And one of the biggest values of the free plans is for people to take the plans, go shop them around, go through the guidebook and understand that they can't quite afford it yet. And what we've seen over and over and over across the nation is people get excited about building an ADU. They go spend $5,000 to $15,000 on an architect. They go do a little bit of a site plan. They make it a surveyor out. They're $20,000, $30,000 into the project and they figure out they can't afford it. Or they have an easement that goes through their property. Or they can't take out a heritage tree or any number of things. So if somebody can go into the office and get a free set of plans and basically do their own development homework, they're going to save money right out of the gate. Again, you know, wealthy people don't need pre-approved plans. They're going to go design their own custom jewel box in their backyard. And I help people all over the country for decades in this process. And I'll tell you, myself included, most people over-design, over-build and therefore overspend. So the whole point of our plans here are affordability. And we're building for just over $100 a square foot. And everybody says, no way, no, you don't. And that's kind of how the YouTube channel started is it's like, yeah, actually, we do. And we're going to share it with everybody else. So it can be done. We can build more affordable housing types. And then the second piece would be electrical metering. So one major benefit of accessory dwelling units is the ability to piggyback off of existing utilities. And the DLCD really clearly put out a white paper when they gave the guidance on 1058 and a little bit of cleanup work on 2001. This said that this is a major benefit. And so to have the requirement to put a city meter on for an accessory dwelling unit is very, very unique to our city. It's not a bad thing. It's just an expense. So most people go to upgrade their meter. And a lot of times they'll have to call for a shutdown. They'll have to bring in a larger line, either from overhead or pulled underground, to upgrade their existing panel to be able to add an additional 100 or 200 amp service. And it's getting harder and harder as we're going away from gas. One good trick, if you already have 70% of your available load calculation going to your primary, it's nice to bring in a separate gas meter from Avista to supplement some of the appliances in that accessory unit to not have to upgrade your service. But having that second meter, on average, we see it as about a $7,000 expense. So just something that we could do better. And then I was asked, or it was mentioned to maybe speak about middle housing land divisions. And I'll just go through a couple of slides really quickly. The MHLD is a very, very powerful tool. I think it's the holy grail to development in Oregon. Like, I could not be more proud of our state and our city for leaning forward and into this. And we've done the first couple in the county. And it's a powerful tool to take existing single-family lots, which are really no longer in our state verbiage, right? Every single interior lot can be a duplex lot. But to take those lots and be able to split them up into fee simple partitions, to make more affordable, more attainable for sale housing units or in some cases, another asset that can be refinanced to go build more rental units. So the middle housing land division is super powerful. It's not, state law does not define an ADU as a middle housing unit. Middle housing units would be kind of limited to duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters. A lot of people know them as cottage courts. But the ADU is kind of its own standalone piece of infill housing. And for the definition of middle, there's some really good information out there. But the gentleman, Dan, who coined it, pretty much had it as an asset type. It's a housing type. It's between a single-family house and a large apartment building. A lot of people have misconstrued that as like a middle income. So it's not as attached to monetary sources as it is to size and modeling. So really cool concepts. There's some really exciting stuff in our state. I fly an Oregon state flag on my job site. Like, I couldn't be more proud. And there's some duplexes and some quadplexes and a few cottage clusters that are being built right now in our town that are really exciting. And I would encourage everybody, if you haven't gone onsite and toured some of these ideas and met with the builders that are building them, super exciting. And I wanted to leave a few minutes here to take any questions that people might have when it comes to infill housing. How can I be a resource? How can I add value? Please, just, there's no stupid questions. I'd love to hear from the commission. I appreciate your time. I've sat in your seat before. I know that no good deed goes unpunished.
I have a question for staff. Can Greg and Eric see this? Could they see this presentation?
That I don't know.
Yep.
Oh, good.
Oh, good. Thank you. It was very good, so I want to make sure that everybody could see it. Anybody have any questions?
I do. Derek, thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Great presentation. So I have a, just a question about what you're seeing in the marketplace in terms of modular, you know, the costs and the benefits for potential investors, homeowners, that, what are the trade-offs?
Yeah, yeah, wonderful question. Yeah, that's, that's one of the most asked questions I get. As of now, we still have not seen modular construction that's more affordable and really even any faster. Somebody will crack that code. I think everybody is already really competing with Warren Buffett. I mean, we have modular homes. They're called manufactured homes. And there's a huge benefit to them is they're stamped federally with the HUD stamp. So you get to override all state and local jurisdiction and place that wherever you want, with some exceptions to historic districts, even in our state. When we look at these cool new modular designs that we see all over Instagram and we see on Pinterest, there, or we see Boxable, like Elon Musk lives in this $50,000 Boxable on Mars, like, no, he doesn't. The problem is, is the site work, the citing and design, the foundation, water, sewer, power, gas, trenching, stormwater, retention, you know, steep slope. All that stuff still applies. And there are a couple of companies that we see doing well. There's two companies locally that got a $5 million grant this last year. One of them being local with Pacific Wall Systems that is, I would call a semi-modular, where they just do exterior walls. But even them, if you go to their website right now to order a pack many, they're just not quite tooled up. So the concept is there. Somebody will crack the code. If a developer came in and said, hey, we're not going to build on 99 because it's too steep. But if they were going to go try to do 230 units somewhere else and it was flat and accessible and there was no power lines and trees and hills and you could back trucks in and just start setting these things up, that would work. But in most cases, in residential, low and medium density, it's easier to build onsite. And it's more affordable. And it's usually faster because the few companies, the best one I know of is Wolf Industries out of Battleground, Washington. And they've produced over 400 units. And, you know, they're a year out to get one. So still, simple design onsite is better.
And that's true for ADUs too.
This is all ADU talk. Yeah, yeah, these are all, these are all small accessory units designs. Great question though, John. Thank you.
I would note that four of the plans that are included in this guide were reviewed and approved by Pacific Wall Systems as models as well. So once they're tooled up and their backlog is resolved, again, it's not a modular developed and set onto a foundation, but all the walls coming. The time onsite is accelerated, even if the time waiting for that product to be available might be extended.
Yeah, yeah, good question. But I always revert back to a manufactured home is already crack the code on getting an off-site-built unit brought to your house. And we just, it's really hard to accept that housing type in a lot of areas for obvious reasons, I think.
So sort of following up on that, I was fascinated to see homes advertised and sold on Amazon for $50,000 that are supposed to arrive from China in a container and simply be assembled and usable. But I, listening to your comments here, you know, I, it sort of leads me to what are the controls in this, in this area? And, you know, is there any sort of certification or anything like that that will help the consumer other than what we have here? And oh, by the way, I always wanted a Carlos Delgado house, so maybe I'll have one in my backyard now.
Yeah, right. Well, I would just suggest that you get the, the plan set for that Amazon house and you send it to Aaron Anderson and ask him what it would take to get that approved on your single-family lot. The answer actually is that, is if you see a Home Depot shed that says it's an ADU or you see a tough shed that says, we build these to legal standards, or you see a kit house on Amazon that's 30 grand, get the plan set. This goes for Boxable too. Boxable's in this huge marketing scheme right now where, try to get ahold of the company and get a set of their plans because they will need to be approved from the building department. And nine times out of 10, you can't get ahold of anybody to get a set of plans to even see if you can get them through plan review, which you can't in most cases. The exception to what I'm saying is there is some state standard that is coming out for modular. So there will be, similar to a federal HUD stamp that a manufactured home would get, there's a state modular prefab stamp that basically says, this has been reviewed by, by the state board and cities don't have to, besides citing and design, the cities don't have to inspect these, which is a huge benefit, but those wheels move really slow. And as soon as somebody cracks the code fully, supply and demand will take the prices way up and the lead time is way out. And it'll still be more affordable and more attainable and more efficient and faster to build affordable design onsite, in my opinion. Especially in areas where we're at, where we have a lot of trees, grade, power lines, above-ground power, things like that. But yeah, the ADU guidebook that we have as a small city, this is really huge. A lot of big cities have them, but to be a small, forward-looking city to come up with this, I just really commend the city and staff. Thanks again. If there's any more questions, I'll take them. Yeah.
Yeah, Derek, thanks very much for your presentation. What really stood out to me was the things that you've seen other places work well that we could potentially do here. And my question for staff is, you know, for these potential reduction or elimination of system development fees, you know, the possibility of not requiring electrical units on the ADUs and some of this, you know, middle housing land division that you talked about. Brandon, how do we get this stuff going or how do we investigate if this might be good for, for Ashland?
So the city of Ashland, when we were doing our last systems development charge fee methodology, was identifying the development potential throughout the city. And as we all know, systems development charges pay for system-wide needs for water, sewer, parks and transportation. And so the additional capacity of additional units does put additional strain on those citywide systems. And so we did work with the person, the consultant team that was working on that methodology to look at smaller units as having less of an impact. And as such, we're able to make a justification that they be charged less SDCs. So the guide does show that, that's still a fee that is collected by the city. I think the question in terms of waiving that fee means where is that fee collected? Because that is still a cost that is borne by the city to improve that citywide infrastructure. So that is a council policy decision in terms of what funding resources are available to subsidize the development of a particular housing type. We currently have that directive from council for all truly affordable units that are affordable to people making less than 80% median income. But for market rate units that are not deed restricted, if they're less than 500 square feet, it's the 50%. But that is something that the city council could, upon recommendation from Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee, make a recommendation to change as an incentive for accessory residential units. We're fortunate as a city our size to have proportionally a lot of accessory dwelling units. I don't quite remember the number. I think we had 51 housing units last year, 14 of which were accessory dwelling units. I'm looking as if someone else might remember the numbers as well.
110 ADUs in the last six years was the last number I saw.
Yeah. So we do do quite a few. It's typically like 20, 10 to 20% of our housing stock is accessory dwelling units. And so that is a impact that would have to be absorbed through some other funding source. So that, I don't know that answers your question, but that's the directive that if the council directed to look at systems film and charge methodology and adjust it to essentially not charge SDCs for certain housing types, then that fee is being picked up by the other housing types by increasing their SDCs. And so, or it's a subsidy. In terms of the electric utility meter, I think that's one that we should raise with the electric department. It is existing city code that every dwelling unit have its own meter. I think that was born out of, and this is me speculating as to when it was developed because it predates my time at the city. But during the OPEC crisis, 1972, there was federal legislation that required every dwelling unit to be able to meter their own electricity independently. There's been advances in that technology since then so that there can be sub-meters that are able to meter electric independently. There is a value in the city having a meter for each utility, or for each unit so that that is the entity that is charging those electric fees as opposed to a property owner charging their tenants a, you know, 50% of the electric cost. And it was, I think, what that original federal legislation was intended to address. We've seen recently, and this isn't related to electric, but notification, or articles in the paper about water utilities for manufactured home parks in our neighboring communities where there's one meter that is then divided amongst all the tenants. And many tenants are having extreme water costs and not able to meter that on what their usage is. But again, I think that's different than electric because I think there is sub-panels and individual unit metering that can be done that is not a city electric meter installed. Whether that requires a panel upgrade and a larger service, I don't know. Probably depends on the unit. I will note, and this is not your question, but related to something that Derek had indicated, a gas meter on the unit. The city council at their last meeting passed first reading ordinance that will charge a additional fee on any installation of a gas water heater, a gas stove and gas laundry facility. So for new construction, and when we're talking about these units, they're new units, would be subject to that fee. And I think if charged that fee, it would readily offset any increased cost in just going all electric. I think it was $4,000 plus for a electric range and $1,500 for a gas water heater. So those costs would be a substantial disincentive to installing gas in new construction for accessory dwelling units going forward, if approved at second reading and then in effect.
That's interesting, being that the rulemakers own the utility. Okay, yeah, yeah, that would incentivize people to go electric. That wasn't a monopoly joke. I was hoping like somebody would chuckle at all. Sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Eric, did you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, the state of Oregon does allow sub-metering for tenants where the landlord would throw on a small meter. It's fairly inexpensive. And then pass that added electric use on to the tenants without paying additional. use on to the tenants without paying additional meter fee, which I think in Ashland's $30 roughly per electric meter per month.
Yeah, there's rules set forth by the Utility and Exchange Commission on how property owners can bill back the tenants. And we put private electric meters on our accessory dwelling units in our portfolio. Here's one here, it's a GE meter, they cost about $250. The overall panel upgrade and install of these is about $700 compared to, on average, $7,000 for a city meter. And it's not a negative, okay? I'm not saying that this is a problem, I'm just saying that Ashland is unique, ideal cities all over the country, and thousands and thousands and thousands of ADU applications. And it's specific to here. I can tell you, as a property owner, when I buy a property that has an ADU in Ashland, and it has two meters, it's nice. It's one less thing to worry about. But I will say, it can be a benefit to tenants to have the sub-meters, because we don't charge them a meter fee. And your meter rate is actually based on usage, it's a step-up system, similar to tax law. And so they actually pay a little bit less for the utilities that they consume. And then, the other two main utilities, we'll just call them water and wastewater, are always shared, and there's no requirement to sub-meter or publicly meter them either. So, just an option, if we're looking at ways to streamline and reduce costs for more affordable housing types that aren't subsidized, those are, those were like my two things that I thought we could do a little bit better. And we can, most cities have four or five of those things on my list. So to be able to say that, it's like, we're way ahead of the curve.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, so, anything else on this issue?
More to come in terms of its release, there's a new website next week. And thank you for the comments about the insurance and taxes, those may be things that we can incorporate in short order before it goes live.
Okay, then, we're on to open discussion. Anybody have anything to discuss? If not, I will move to the last item on the agenda, which is to adjourn. So, anybody have a motion?
I thought that we were going to discuss the project on terrace. Did I somehow mistake that for tonight? It's not tonight?
I don't think so.
That'll be on February 11th, would be the reconvening.
Okay, so it's all, it's a whole nother.
It's still currently in the period, the first eight days, where anybody could provide information to the record, has concluded. We're now in the second eight days.
So it's response time?
Yeah, so we can get written responses, at this point, to anybody that had provided testimony previously in this eight-day period, which we, I think expires on January 30th or the 31st.
Okay, sorry, I just misunderstood.
Yeah, and then we will have eight days beyond that for the applicant to respond. And all of those responses will be coming back to the Planning Commission for your review, and going straight into deliberations on February 11th.
Oh, ahead.
Yeah, and, you know, Michael has posted all the first batch of responses that we've received online. So, you know, again, we're getting a lot of public comment, and there's no requirement that you wait till it all be in before you start coming up to speed on it?
Thank you very much.
Because I think we've gotten over 100 pages since our last hearing.
It's a lot, yeah.
Yeah. I have to say, most of it's the, looks like it's attachments to the attorney's letter, but...
Susan? But in terms of, will we receive more insight on the concept and practice of reasonable accommodation?
And I don't want to speak too much about that particular action, because it's still in process. But in the submittal allowance in the first eight days, staff did provide three documents, one from HUD on Fair Housing Act, one from the Department of Justice, that's a combined statement, one from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, a statement, a guide for public officials for the state of Oregon, which applies. And then, I'm forgetting the third, from the Oregon, from the American Planning Association, a quick sheet that describes planning commissioners' roles in reviewing fair housing. So those are really the three documents that are now in the record that you can read as part of your Coming Up to Speed on Fair Housing Act.
Those were great, by the way. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.
All right.